Regarding to the sandwich board signs. I mean, there's a lot, most of the signs, one of the things I know is that most of the signs, if not all of them, in the shopping center are compliant because they have put those signs up or gotten permits to put those signs up during my reign of terror.
Actually, in their business, not on the front lawn, but in their business.
Right.
Well, I think it's a little bit like that broken window theory, that once people see that things are starting to change, that those signs are going away, that there are consequences. We are following up on it because we want the town to look nice, that, you know, it will gain some traction.
Right, and the other thing is, we have the right, if it's on public property, we have the right to go and pick up those little signs and just dispose of them, alright? You know, I'm not a big fan of taking something that somebody's paid good money for and just trashing it, I'm not a fan of that, and we have to have a way to make sure that they, that it's in fact on town property, because we certainly can't go onto private property and pick those signs up.
Well, that's a little more belligerent than we're trying to do here as well. That's a later down the road.
Yeah, that's, 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 that can be step three if we have to, step four or five.
But that does add definitely, as you were saying, all the for hire signs, there are all kinds of signs that pop up for periods of time.
And typically with those, if I get, you know, if I, if I see a bunch of them pop up, those welding ones, I, you know, I took down, I took down the phone number and I called them and I said, "Get the signs out of there, if they're not gone in 24 hours, then, then we're gonna collect them." And, and they paid a lot of money for those signs, so they came and collected them. And everybody that I've ever called and said, you know, "You have a bunch of these small signs out there that say, you know, pro painters or whatever," and told them that they can't do it, they've picked them up, because they always show back up again at some point.
Right. Well, they hire college kids to go out.
Yeah.
Just put these out wherever you can.
Yeah, pretty much.
One time in college, we were, I was on the programming board, and we were trying to publicize an event, and so while I was waiting for the bus at the corner, I put up a sign, because there's 20,000 signs, so I put mine up, you know, "Number here, for more information, call." I got a call from, and I got something in the mail from the zoning compliance officer, and I was like, all I was trying to do was get people to the event, and he said, "That's illegal, you're not supposed to put the sign up there." I said, "I had no idea, I thought I was being creative and, you know," and he said, "You can be creative on private property, but not on the post."
Because half the people that we're talking about don't know that there's a sign by law, probably.
Right.
They know that there's a sign by law, but nobody thinks of those little things as a sign, they are, obviously, but they're, just nobody, nobody thinks that they're, that they're any big deal. Part of the problem with, with downtown is that most of the little signs out there are for the businesses that are in the shopping center, that, you know, you can drive right by that and not even know it's out there, so, and...
And I've talked about that with Peter too, and he said, "Well, I wanna do a sign, but it's too big," and I said, "Well, that's something the board can help you with."
Right.
If you need an exception to the rule, that's what we're here for, there's a special permit for that, so now we just gotta get 'em to India and do something.
Well, this may cause some discussion between the businesses in the Village Center and Peter, if they find that they can't keep their signs out there.
Right. Because they do look really cool.
I'm not sure Peter cares, but...
Peter does, Peter, Peter, Peter is, I've, I've talked to Peter, and Peter is, is, not the evil guy that he's been portrayed sometimes as, he's very, every time I've ever talked to him, he's very cooperative and very wanting to do things, but he's gone, recently gone through his, you know, the death of his dad, you know, and he's, and he's overwhelmed with, you know, the new baby and the, and the sick mom and the, and the whole nine yards, it's like just life gets in the way sometimes of what you, what you wanna do, and he does have, he does have plans, alright, so he's not, it's not like he's just, everything is just stagnant, that's not the way it is, but, you know, all of those things involve being able to fund it, and, you know, but...
But as Lynn says, you know, maybe working with him with the signs here and that may help bring out some good things to happen.
And just to prioritize some of the plans that he might have.
And make the business better.
Right.
Which is what'd be good for him.
Right, right.
Okay, I, I will work with Kelly and get something for the next meeting.
Good.
Victoria.
Want that on the whole side again?
Do you want it for the next session? Is that, easily make these updates and then give it to...
Is that gonna be for the next work session, or did you want us to save that to the seven?
Yeah, do it on the seven.
Seven.
Got it.
You can do whatever you need to do.
Okay, yeah, great, got it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And Kelly, if you, if you get something together and you wanna send it to me, I'll do a write.
I'll send it to you, I'm sorry, I don't know why you made it...
Yep, no problem. I'll...
I'm gonna make these changes that we talked about today, I'm gonna send a copy to you and to Dick for revisions, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, very good, good.
Thank you.
Debbie, are we moving number five, or...
There's a letter attached.
Yep.
Yes.
Letter attached.
From John and...
Do you wanna talk to us about this?
Um, John, you wanna start kind of your vision, and then I can add to it with the discussions over here?
Per earlier direction of the board, I have been trying to focus on the lead for much of the downtown revitalization stuff, and have roped Lynn into helping me with a bunch of things. One of the things that has come up that Lynn uncovered is that the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPS-E, has funding, they're a quasi-public organization, they have funding that can help towns with, and municipalities with certain kinds of work, essentially to build regional strength and help with planning, and they also have a lot of internal technical capabilities in terms of doing assessments and so on. This is an opportunity to apply for a grant, it's in the range of $25,000, to get a strategic plan. Now, a strategic plan is not a master plan, it is a high-level look at the primary factors and constraints and things like that, and Lynn has not only discovered who to send it to, but has arranged to have this letter looked at by one of the people in MAPS-E who could tell us whether it, you know, ticks the buttons and rings the bells, the folks there, and is likely to be looked upon favorably. My understanding is that because we've not gotten money for them from things like this in the past, that we should be in good stead there. The second thing is that, as you read the letter or you read it, you'll see that trying to point out that A, we have something that matters to all citizens, we have a lot of efforts underway, we're sort of ready to go, we've made it an official, you know, town goal, and things like that, and so what we would do today, if it is okay with you, is approve this letter as written or with amendments, if you have them, and it would then go immediately, probably ahead of this meeting, to Mike.
Yes.
Who, Mike at, Mark, Mark at MAPS-E, he kinda give it a look and tell us if we're on track or anything, and assuming it's okay, or there are only very minor changes he would suggest, we would then send it off to Ralph Wilmore, who is the individual receiving the applications, am I right?
Yep, he's a senior planner, and he's actually the one who put together the strategic plan that John and I heard about at a planning meeting about a month ago, he had worked with Essex to put theirs together. Theirs was a town-wide strategic plan, we're looking just for the downtown revitalization, since we have already tackled a number of significant projects and we have our goals, this would really focus in on the enhancements that can be made downtown, short-term and long-term, and help prioritize them, get engagement with the businesses and the residents, and lay out a roadmap. It's, it was nine pages in length, it was very concise, prioritized and gave action items.
That's the town of Essex.
Yeah, and so we, I spoke with the administrator from the town of Essex, and they are implementing the plan, and they're doing great, they're using it as a vehicle to provide updates to the town and to focus resources. Took them about six months to put the plan together, one of the key things that they look for to give you the grant is participation by all key departments and people within the town, so we have that, we have the businesses ready to go, they're interested in doing this, we've got residents, we have the commitment of the board here, we'll work with the FinCom, et cetera, so we would, if we get the grant, we would put together a committee, probably ten or so people from various departments, to work under the guidance of Mr. Fein, he would hold seven two-hour sessions with the group, so there would be some legwork done ahead of time, we've got an awful lot of information that's already collected, but there's some legwork that would be done, and then we meet with the group to actually start the development of it. So, we don't actually get 25,000 per se, we get Mr. Fein to come and work with us.
They don't give us the money, they just do the work.
We get the resources, right, so they are, we're in a perfect time for this, so Mr. Fein will review this, get input back to us, and we'll get this off by the beginning of January, which is exactly the start of their cycle for reviewing grants for this, so we should hear fairly soon after that whether or not we receive the grant.
There's another advantage to this, in talking with Jay Ash, the State Secretary for Economic Development and Housing, he has said that one of the things they look for is they do not do seed funding for projects, they just, they wanna see towns have committed and are making things happen, and you've got at least a, you know, you may be a, you know, a mile race, but they wanna see that you at least are, you know, out of the gate and doing the first one or 200 yards with enthusiasm, commitment, and effectiveness. This would be a strong contributory factor in them kind of opening up the ability for us to make applications for things like possibly master planning grants, this, a way to go between strategic plan and a master plan, but there are a lot of questions, as you know, one of them is, would we need a downtown septic system, for instance, and if so, where would we put the leaching field, and there are a lot of technical issues. The good news is, every time I would bring up one of those, I think talking with Maria DiStefano of the Massachusetts Office of Economic Development, and Jay, turns out that, you know, people are doing, Littleton is shipping their downtown sewage two miles to a treatment plant at the high school, and it basically, you know, their baseball field's built on top of that. You can do it, everything costs money, we're not looking at money, we're trying to get an idea, is this what we would like to have, then we can start addressing the question of how we would get there, but we will get much more state support and money to make things happen, as we're getting, there are a number of private investors, and I've already talked with, with several of them, who are tentatively willing, they're a little cynical after all the years and so on, but by us doing this, getting this going, publicizing it a little bit, I think it'll have a big impact on people's sense that we can maybe make something happen.
And that we're committed, we're behind it.
This is a multi-year town goal, this is not gonna go away for years and years and years, but it's delightful that we're starting.
Do you have a copy of the plan that Essex got?
I do actually, that I can send to you.
I'd like to see it, to see what's really involved in the preliminary...
What it looks like actually is, it's the end goal, so you're not gonna see the process in there, what you're gonna see is our nine goals, like similar to what we have, but with action items listed under there, so there are things that you can move on, people can be assigned to specific ones, so it kind of gives you a roadmap. We have a number of things that we've talked about, but we said, "Well, that's dependent on this, and that, well, we need to get input from that," this lays that all out, so it gives you that roadmap that you can start working on, so I can send that to you all to take a look at.
As with all grants, the question always is, you know, what's the cost? Not like there's no matching cost or anything like that, we're getting his consulting time, but there is a cost, which is a very logical one, there's no other way around it, of personnel. Do we have a feeling for how many hours of department personnel we'll have to put in? Because sometimes the more you put in, the more you get back out, but I don't, it's gotta be at least the minimum that he's looking for, do we have a sense of how many man weeks or whatever?
Just said 14 hours for the meetings.
And it occurs over six months.
14, meetings with him?
Meetings with him and the committee, that's right, so there's legwork that's done offline.
So it's interesting, like it's probably, what times that, because you have to prepare...
It could be, it would be like getting volunteer... The good news is you have a committee, because it would be, you know, businesses, it would be residents, it would be departmental staff, that's true, so, no, we don't have an exact number of hours to participate, but, I mean, I, it's one of our goals, and we feel like we wanted to dedicate resources to this anyway, this is the first step in how we dedicate those.
Yeah, by the way, we did use the MIPC, it was probably 10 years ago.
Oh, really?
But certainly we have.
But it's long enough, I don't think...
But I think it's long enough, and Martha Morrison was very much involved with the one that we did back then.
And Martha, I've talked with extensively about ideas and things and so on, she's very much on board, and one of the open questions is, should we extend the business district up to North Common Street and the structures along the backside there, and I'm talking with her about that, because there's a number of reasons why that may be a key piece of getting this whole thing up and moving, but there's a lot of pieces in motion that are not for public consumption yet, I gather, that will, we're headed in, I think, potentially a very positive direction, but there's a lot of stuff that's still turning into the water.
And this forum gives an opportunity for everybody to give their input and to discuss this, so it's not done in little pockets, it's all done together, out in the open, so that we have consensus moving forward.
With a committee of 10 people, I mean, it's, not the whole town isn't involved, but it's a good cross-section.
Town can be people, yeah.
It's a good cross-section, so we'll put out for, you know, people who are interested in participating, and then keep everybody apprised on it, minutes will be taken, so everybody can see what's actually going on in the meetings, so if they chose to follow it or give input to committee members.
Experts, and they're neutral, so it allows people to see that we're trying to do this in as objective a way as possible, there isn't an in-town group that's trying to drive the process any more than their participation, and this would be, so. Who owns this version of the letter right now?
What do you mean, who owns it, who has it?
Well, I noticed the one that was sent out in Board Docs still had the spacing problem. I fixed the spacing problem in my own personal copy.
The spacing problem in...
The lines, the lines, the spacing area.
I never fixed that.
Oh, I did.
Okay, I sent the copy of the letter to Kelly and Debbie for inclusion in Board Docs, so if you fixed it subsequently, you can send them a copy.
It's possible it's viewing, it's throwing off the format, the way that we're viewing it right now, but I would certainly be fixing that.
I printed it out and solved the same problem.
Oh.
Yeah, I never fixed the line one, because we were just viewing it on...
We're clean confidence, if you three can fix the line.
Yeah, I think we can.
So, I'll detain the motion, but I just wanna check on is the process, so Lynn, you will send this, or Kelly, you will send this to Mark Fein?
I will send it to Mr. Fein, he's expecting it from me, so...
So, if we agree, this is the verbiage, as soon as we leave here, I will go home and send you mine, no changes except the spacing.
Okay.
The answer to your question is, you currently own it.
I guess I currently own it, but I have made no changes to the content that you see here, Lynn and I worked on that earlier today.
But you don't want to send out a letter without complete authority, so I'll detain the motion, I'll do it to Lynn, do we have one of those?
That, 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 vote to approve the letter, you want me to read that?
You gotta keep going.
Vote to approve the letter requesting grant funding and technical assistance from MIPC for the development of a downtown strategic plan and to allow the town administrator to sign.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Vows in favor?
Aye.
Aye, hoes, thank you both, that's great.
Thank you, guys.
It's good work. Not in any way taking away from our commitment to save trees and go with Board Docs, I have a piece of paper to pass on there, it's a reason I did it this way, so to get...
Well, we've, we've already saved 14 lines of paper.
Probably 16.
Yeah, just didn't want this to be, Mr. must, must interpret.
Do you need one of these, Debbie?
Um, no, I have one.
And I'm sorry, but I don't have one for you, I don't need an extra one.
I'll stick there.
Well, it's gonna say it's our audience, they have a short one, you have one, okay.
So, I just wanted to make it clear, I'm not in any way suggesting I've assigned things to people, or that they're official liaisons or anything like that.
That's a pass up, that wasn't important.
But rather, I think that it's inter...
Exactly.
Oh, did you get it?
I think we're, things are evolving nicely, and I just wanted to take this time to sort memorialize where I think we are in terms of people taking leadership in certain areas. So, one of the things we can do immediately is under nine, we can put whichever way you wanna put them, DG and KH, because they're kind enough to volunteer to that stuff, it's in very nicely, so just running, so I just don't want us to step on each other's toes, so to speak, and I also want people, I, sometimes I do things, I want people to know at least some of them, so the town, the town website, I've talked to Kelly, and I've volunteered to try to put together, I'll call it a protocol, or a path, that will set us off, it's a productive way to this, I've started collecting information, that's what I'm doing, I've talked to some people around town, I've also talked to, what's it called, Robert Van Pappen?
Virtual Town Hall Civic Plus.
To, I actually received a very nice phone call from the gentleman, that's our liaison there, just trying to start to get a feeling of what we can tinker with, what we can adjust to, make it, or use it friendly and build more confidence from the town, so I'm doing that. The town hall financial policies, I'm wondering the broader sense, but it's really Kelly and Karen Dow that are really championing this, I think copy me, so, and I keep saying, and make sure that these can be waived if there's something comes up, and that future finance committees can do it differently if they need to, that's what I mean. The fiscal year 2020 town budget, again, I'm not usurping everyone else's participation, I never thought that as a former FinCom chair, I might be of some use as we go forward there. I've been trying to organize our efforts on the town administrators before and try. Lynn has already commenced working, and Kelly's gonna probably be on all, yeah, but definitely Kelly should be next to Lynn, Debbie if you can, on those two, anyway, on the town operational systems and the technology efforts have commenced, that's not something that's gonna be done overnight. Downtown revitalization, you just heard about that, voids, or their void, notwithstanding the broader picture stuff, you have been kind enough to really try and impact some specifics, we've still got the issue of the former Convy sign hanging out there, and there's also a, I didn't call it a hole, a bent rusted wooden hole between the two bays that's tilted at an angle like this.
With nothing on it, but just a rusty steel...
It looks like one of those that used to...
Well, there's something at the top, it might have been an arrow or something.
An abandoned sign, and that began, yeah.
So, that kind of thing, and...
Well, it, it might disappear, but, but the fact is, we ought to, if you've got a relationship with Flump, you ought to ask him if we can take that thing down.
That's his?
Huh?
Seems to be on his property, it seems to be, it's between the banks, you know, you, I'm sure it's between...
It's between, it's between the driveway and the banks and then there.
So he would allow us to, we would take it, if he allows us?
I'll, I'll get it going, if you give his permission, then we can take it down.
He might be happy.
We are trying to avoid criminal behavior at all costs, if that's possible, trespassing across...
The black face mask, the box just out the door, see what they think.
Other things that are not listed as our goals, but just wanted people to know, I think obviously I have a longstanding relationship with the elementary schools, and I've been approached a couple of times already in the year by the administration and the current chair to sit down and just talk generally about how the town side and the school side should work together, all been very positive, the chair, it's her first Katrina, Frey, and all again, very positive, very complimentary, very working as a team, but I just, I want people to know that we're doing that. We also, in that same kind of loop, we had an initial, initial or second publication by the Topswood Education Foundation, that, one section of which I found very, very disturbing, and it was starting to go the direction of them working against the school committee, us, the one selectmen, and so on and so forth, so I also, and I was invited to engage in a meeting, again, with the administration, the chair, and another school committee member who is very active, a couple of them are very active in TEF, and I think I was, they apologized for that, it was not their intention, they didn't have an awareness of the way that it was being read, I mean, by others. Any communications that I've seen in the publications and the big meeting that they had at Masco is what I've been told for, is that they, you know, they stayed away from that direction completely, so I think it was good to know that, to get a common ground.
We went to...
Obviously, Mr. Spencer is the Masco representative.
To that end too, I'm wondering, I'd like to make a request, and it's up to you, if you wanna hear it, I could give a probably 10 to 15 minute summary of what's going on there, that will inform your conversations with FinCom. Zilly and I are meeting with FinCom, trying to do it on a regular basis for their, we start our seven o'clock meetings, there's a lot of stuff in motion, because FinCom drives most of the financial planning in terms of Masco, we're focusing there, but it's really important that we understand it here, that you know what's going on, the dynamics are changing.
I think that would be great, and I think the place is, is it the next work session where we have a whole, little meeting, or is about budgeting?
Yeah.
Just tell me when, yeah, let me know when.
The 20th.
The 20th.
The 20th, okay.
A week from today, and four.
And if you can make a special mutation of Masco.
I can do that, yeah, and I'll, I'll try to make it focused and, but it'll really help you understand, there's been a lot of confusing crossfire recently, and we're trying to sort that out if we can.
Should we be adding that to our next week's agenda?
Yeah, within the budget discussion, you got definitely 3,000, I would have, totally somewhat, somewhat tentative, when are you hiring your superintendent, or did you already?
We have not, we had our...
Two finalists, right?
The two finalists, we voted at the beginning of the meeting to postpone deliberation and to vote for a week, because some of our members, we started at five o'clock, because it was two hours for each interview, nobody wanted to see if we could spend over six hours talking about it, and we had two people who weren't there, hadn't seen the videos, and so even though they showed up in time to vote, it would have been appropriate, so they're gonna look at the videos, we're gonna do it next week.
Are you excited about the Duke meetings? Uh-oh.
That was a long pause.
You don't need to answer that.
They call that, I think it's still says in 2018, a pregnant pause.
What was, what was the, what was the next time?
So, Lynn is also spearheading it with Kelly, Kelly should be next there to our town hall public use stuff, and that's at our next meeting, we have plenty of time to give to them, too. Also was reminded that Lynn is part, is a board member on Council of Aging, so somewhat analogous to what you're doing, so I'll keep us on that. Something surprising to me anyway, over the course of the years, I've steered somewhat out of the midst of our personnel policies and regulations, and we had, a situation was brought to me, and I had to just, first of all, find out, we had 82 pages that I'd never read before. But to particularly find, I was asked what the process would be, if someone had a problem with the supervisor, would they appeal to or go to next one, and I thought it would be as simple as flipping to the index and flipping to a section, it's not, so there's sort of three provisions, one that deals particularly, one or two that deal with discrimination and that kind of stuff, and another that's just generic, so I have no ability, and normally intended to, and then we start a review of the 82 pages and the bylaws and all that, but I do think it's, but meanwhile, here we are, we operate every day, we have personnel issues, good or bad, or whatever a third option is every day, I think they need to work, and there's one in particular, which is kind of like the main non-represented personnel, my word, appeals process, and no disrespect to the people that put together years ago, but it doesn't work, like it, it's not that, I, it says one, two, three, four, and I think it, it doesn't work, it has really undefined terms, and at least one place, I think it has the wrong term, or it has something else, and somehow it has to be, a person who works for the town needs to be able to know, I do A, then B, then C, it's real important, so I'm, I'm somewhat analogous to the website thing, I will try to get a draft together that does work, it's complicated, Kelly and I had a preliminary discussion, and you get into these issues about, I won't get too deep into, but I keep talking about appealing to appointing authorities, but then, that's not as clear as it seems it would be, and then you have, there's a, there's another provision about appointed authorities who are elected, there's some differences between those and appointed authorities, so like, we appoint the board to help, possibly they're an appointed authority, it might be right, maybe, maybe five, but they're not elected people, they're appointed people. but they're not elected people, they're appointed people. Well, the planning board, they're elected, it's unclear to me that the board, well... The question arises as to whether the board of health, board of selectmen, is a level of appeals to them in any way and that we have any legal standard to do that. So I try to pull it together and get some, at least a little work from a practical point of view, people able to know absolutely what to be worth.
Thank you, so 80 pages roughly, how many are you going to be looking at?
No, only like three.
Three, that's the question, the answer is three, okay. That's what I was trying to get at.
He's just trying to find those three.
Yeah.
We found them, he just got a work on them.
Can you modify those, Mark, do they get voted on?
No, we won't.
We can vote on...
Yeah, but I'm worried we have a fear about first. We've got to talk about something that'll work at least on the...
There is a process that's in there, that explains how to update it.
Did you ever put an address in your GPS and, and you know that no one who has lived in this area for more than a day and a half would ever go that way?
Get up on a dead, dead-end road.
Hey, Lynn, we have some minutes.
Sure. Dave, we have the executive session for November 8th.
I have no comments.
You have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the November 8th, 2018 board of selectmen executive session as presented.
Second?
Second.
Sorry. Okay, one of them did.
Yeah, one of them.
Any discussion or wish, all those in favor?
Aye.
You next?
The November 19th regular meeting minutes.
Okay, on page two, just a quick change, the third paragraph, last line of that, the cap should be recap, R-E-C-A-P, one word.
I'm sorry, where were you then?
Page two, third paragraph down, just the cap becomes recap.
Oh, yes, yep, do you see that, Debbie, third paragraph? It's a tax, a recap?
Yep, tax, with an R, recap.
Yeah, just, yeah, the whole recap, recap.
Yep.
Tax P, oh, gotcha.
Yeah. Good, I have two other ones that I'll give it to Debbie. 3:00 PM, one place is just 3:00 PM, and we'll make it with two zeros. And there's one other typo, literally a letter, I'll talk about that. I make a motion to approve the board of selectmen minutes of November 19th, 2018 as amended.
Second.
Second, any further discussion, all those in favor, as I...
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead. I entertain a motion that the board enter into closed executive session according to the Master of Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, A.D., under Section Number 2, the executive session incorporated by negotiations, general, specifically, to discuss and negotiate the term of this phase of agreement since another meeting, they got a judgment toward the government's firing position. The board will not return to regular session.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Yep, second. Now, oh, we need a...
A roll call, yes.
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 Yes. And we have an executive session. Everybody, whether it's by Board Doc or this, do you distribute these, these...
I haven't seen those, when they've been in this...
Oh, no, 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 no.